Have a chair at the house. Sit in it and lean back.
Green light. We're getting close. I'm sure my gavel upside down.
I know, I know.
It'd be quieter if you put your music right.
I wonder if they make gavels like those golf balls and it's fluid when you handle them?
You would put it there.
Uh, I don't think the mayor has any problem with that gavel. Believe me, I can hear it pretty loud.
Hey, would it, would it?
Binge it in the session.
Mayor, would it be cool if they made one like those golf balls and when you hit it, it's fluid?
That'd be great. Or put one underneath it somehow.
We could be on TikTok.
Want to start testing for that?
Don't even tell what to me.
Um, who'd like to lead us in prayers tonight?
John.
I'll take it. Alright. No vomit holes.
I was actually thinking about a dead blow gavel. Like felt it was insane.
I don't know why you can't just say, I'm calling this to order.
Well.
You have people who appreciate the pomp and circumstance of the whole affair.
I would just do this.
You know, it's a bit of theater.
Order.
You know what's funny? In, in my twenty years, I've never seen a judge use a gavel. They never do. And I, I keep a spectrum.
Well, check this out. I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, January the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. The time is six P M. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
This is Sir James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Matt Lazarene.
Here.
We have four.
Excellent. Please stand if you're able and join Councilman Briscoe as he leads us into work of prayer. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings and please guide us tonight as we conduct our city's business. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join the council in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Excellent. Please be seated. Alright, moving right along to presentations. We are gonna push out the first presentation that is on the agenda to a later time. So that brings us to D two. Recognition of formal city council member Heath Rosenstein. Mr. Rosenstein, please join us up front. So this has been a long time coming and part of what cost us Heath's leadership is, is his job. So the job transition that's kept him away from receiving this recognition for the last couple of months is part of what took him away from us. But um, as a community, you should know that Councilman Rosenstein led the city through a lot of changes, a lot of amazing changes. Where we were able to build momentum as a city. We were able to put some things in place that'll be realized soon and some that were realized along the way. And anytime somebody steps up in the city to take on this role that bears very little appreciation, absolutely no pay, and does nothing but take your time, attention, and talent for nothing, uh, we really wanna honor him with a small, a small gift uh, that you can place on your mantle and the world can be reminded, and you can be reminded of that time when you used to give your talent away for free. So if we could, could everybody on council join us up here so we could?
Yeah.
Councilman Rosenstein, a proper send off. There you go. Look at that. Look at that. It's in white. It's in my eye.
Stick around Heath, you don't have to go anywhere. Stick around Heath. You don't have to go home now.
Yes, sir. Alright. That takes us down to item E, community interests. Any items of community interest? Here we go, Mrs. Black.
Uh, just a reminder that the Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual banquet this coming Thursday night at White House High School. So it promises to be a fun time. And we fared the winter storm rather well.
Yes.
No major issues.
Yes.
Very good job. Yes, sir.
So a big thank you to our police, fire, and public records departments that never stop working.
Yes. Thank you.
And then we did have some issues of flooding today, mostly isolated G Rs. As far as I know, we haven't had any reports of it getting into any buildings or homes. So that's good news as well. We hope that continues, um, as we expect to continue to receive more rain over the evening.
That's right.
It looks like some of the work that we did north on one-ten helped because
It sure did.
I, I drove by there a couple of times today and it looked to be under control. So that's, that's the county, that's, that's us, that's There's several, yeah, a text eye, that's, that's several people keeping the beavers out of there. And uh,
I was surprised on the way home that it wasn't flooded.
Same.
I watched too, last year.
Yeah, well done. Alright, anything else in the matter of community interests? No? Alright, that brings us to public forum. We have somebody that has signed up for public forum, so I'll go ahead and read this section. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero-zero-seven, members of the public may speak on an agenda item during the public forum section of the meeting or at the time the item is called for discussion by the mayor. Speaker shall be given three minutes to speak. A speaker needing a translator and/or an interpreter may be given six minutes to speak. Criticism of city staff is prohibited. Those wishing to address the council regarding an item not on the agenda must be a citizen, property owner, or business owner in the City of White House. Comments on such agenda items shall be limited to three minutes. The council will not comment on items not on an agenda. However, the council may refer to the, may refer the item to city staff for research, resolution, or referral on the matter to the city as a future agenda item. Today's speaker is, uh, Richard. He will be speaking to us, um, about White House. Richard, please approach the podium.
Thank you.
And Richard has verified his address. He is a citizen of White House, so you have three minutes, sir. The time is yours.
Right, uh, if I may get to stop watching this one. I'm Richard Flandera. Moved here, bought my house, two thousand nineteen, and I always wanted to live in a town like this where we're more of a community, like a family, that we come together when we need to, that we help each other, and we have a great city council who is always welcoming to suggestions, ideas, comments, concerns, and everything else like that. It's open to everybody. And we have a wonderful police department, fire department. All the officers I've come in contact with are incredible. I know particularly more than any of the other you. Mike Lowe is a great city council member. And I always tell everybody, family, friends, it's the best place on earth to live. I don't have the best state in the, the world, best country in the world, but this is the best place, period, in the world to live. That's why I came here, you know, when I was done with my military service. And I absolutely love it here. I'm grateful for everybody who's made this the best place on earth to live. And there's, I haven't seen anything wrong in four years plus. It's been kind of a problem. Everything's been perfect. I just wanted to say thank you all. Thank, thank police department, fire department, and everybody that does everything they can to make this the best place on earth. Thank you, you all, have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Mrs. Black, if you could regularly schedule comments like that, that'd be great. Um, that takes us on to, uh, that was the only person that signed up for public forum. So we're gonna move down to the consent agenda. So there's only one item on the consent agenda, and that is the minutes of the previous council meeting. So there's nothing in those minutes to discuss as part of the open agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda is approved. Getting into the meat of it, moving down to section H, one. Other action items, ordinances, resolutions, public hearings. Number one is presentation and discussion of the Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. Mrs. Black, would you like to delay that? Would you like to push that down further the agenda to allow some time?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Is council okay with that? Our, our consultant is not here. So due to the weather, just wanna give them a little bit more time to show up. I guess that'll show this. Delayed table? I'm not exactly sure what that's called.
Well, it's delayed to further in the meeting, and if they can't make it, I'll present it.
Okay. We'll move that down to right after future agenda items, or if they show up, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and get them in.
Sure.
Alright, moving down to item H two. Please don't let me forget about item H one. Discussion, consideration, and action on ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one-two-three dash zero-one, updating rates charged for the collection and treatment of wastewater. Oh, Jennifer's taking this one.
Uh-oh.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and council, on January ninth, uh, Will Dan proposed a small increase to city wastewater rates over the next five years. The increase recommended is six percent on the minimum monthly charge and per thousand gallons for sewer owner. This increase will be approximately a dollar eighteen per month on the base rate and ten cents per thousand gallons for the majority of our customers. The attached ordinance includes all rates for city services, but only the rates for wastewater have changed. Staff will answer any questions and recommend to approve.
Alright, I believe this was the presentation that was given to us last week. The cost assessment of what it actually costs to run the water and the wastewater. We're looking good on the water, but the wastewater came back a little bit short, a dollar or something. Seemed pretty close. I'm, I'm glad we were that close, but this is before you, council, for your consideration and discussion.
And just, you know, part of our discussion last week is we haven't raised rates since twenty-nineteen, where most areas have every year. So this is needed, and we've been pretty diligent, and y'all have done a really good job since twenty-nineteen of keeping those rates.
And this is so minimal.
It is.
But it made a big difference in that timeline over the next few years of what we need for some infrastructure to set up.
And it is something we can revisit annually too, if you don't think it's enough, so.
Sure.
Alright, any more questions from Jennifer? No? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion. For you to approve the ordinance twenty-four oh-one-two-three oh-one, updating rates charged for collection of treatment of wastewater.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, with that, the motion carries. Alright, we're down to item H three, discussion, consideration, and action on the City of White House's participation in the Smith County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Who, who's taking this one? Brandon.
Everybody turns.
Alright, Brandon Moore is here with us. Oh, sorry, state, spoiler, please state your name and
Good evening, uh, mayor and, uh, council members, Brandon Moore.
Alright. What would you like to speak to us about today, Mr. Moore?
Uh, well, I didn't know I was. Uh, so right now, we're in the process of updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief and I have come up with several items. Hope you enjoyed reading it.
Oh, yeah.
Just like to move forward and allow any public participation.
So, Mayor and council, I'll add that the county is currently seeking, uh, public participation on this plan they have formed on their website where citizens can comment or provide any updated information on the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan. As Mr. Moore mentioned, there are several things outlined in the plan that are particular to White House. It does not commit us to funding those projects, but does identify them and would provide future grant opportunities for funding should we decide to pursue them.
And it keeps us on their map.
Yes.
Things go wrong, they look down here, which I like.
They've been great partners, uh, particularly through this last winter storm. They were really helpful. Uh, all of our regional agencies were incredibly helpful, um, in getting us straight up. So we really appreciate the work that they do.
Absolutely.
If, if I may. The coordination of planning is, is, is way more intense than it has been and more thorough than it has been. Um, and so we're seeing that already in some of the emergencies we're experiencing as far as our communications and our coordinations at the county level and the different city levels. Um, much like Ms. Black said, the, uh, the opportunity of us doing this Hazard Mitigation Plan does open us and make us eligible for certain grant opportunities. And some of those, what we've looked at so far, are very applicable to White House. No guarantees. But, uh, it's the most momentum we've seen in a really long time, uh, through the joy of working with Brandon. And, uh, the counties, we're in a better place now, uh, as we're doing this kind of coordination and planning.
Excellent. Alright, any questions for Brandon? Mr. Moore? No? Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate you. It's way under that bus, I know. Any further discussion from council? Alright, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the City of White House's participation in the Smith County Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented.
Second.
Oh, I heard Councilwoman Harris first. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. We've got a plan. Alright, that breaks us, brings us down to item H four, discussion, consideration, and action on strategies for recruiting and adding an additional sergeant position in the police department. Chief, you taking this one? Oh, okay. Thought maybe we were throwing each other in the bus.
I mean, there's still time.
The look in his eyes was
There's still time.
The look in his eyes was enough for me.
I reserve the right to change mine. And Mayor and council, as you all know, we've been working diligently over the past several years to increase our recruitment efforts, particularly in our police department, but also increasing our benefits citywide for our staff. And tonight before you, we have a couple of requests. One, we would like to approve changes to the city's benefit plan. We would, um, like to increase the police department's lateral entry program and add an additional sergeant position for the police department. Um, Chief Robison and I have been talking about staffing for the police department since we both came here in twenty-nineteen and feel that now is the time to add an additional sergeant's position. We had one planned for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Um, given a review of our current staffing, we feel that it is in the best interest of officer safety and the service of our community that we go ahead and add that position now and begin recruitment. Um, the estimated fiscal cost for adding that position is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year. Keep in mind, that includes salary benefits, equipment, um, fleet needs that will be needed for that additional position. And we anticipate that we can fund that through additional revenues that are gonna exceed our vegetarian amounts for the fiscal year. Um, for recruitment, the efforts that we've done to date, so we've increased our entry level officer pay from thirty-eight thousand to fifty-five thousand and also increased our tenure of officer pay. Uh, Chief Robison created a lateral entry program. Right now, they can lateral entry at up to seven years of experience. We would like to increase that to ten. Um, as you all know, that program has been crucial in allowing us to attract and retain tenured and experienced police officers. Um, allowing for vacation buybacks, so employees can still back a week, up to a week of vacation a year, um, back to the city. And we do that in November, so it gives a little bit of extra Christmas spending money for them. And we allow, we have a take home, take home car program for our officers, creation of mental health leave. We've increased our retirement contributions. And, and then providing all equipment uniforms to our officers and upgrading our fleet. Um, one of the things that Chief Robison and I have been talking about and we think would be beneficial across all departments is allowing employees in all city departments to begin with forty hours of vacation leave. Um, we've seen that as we have began recruiting and hiring people that are later in their career, this becomes more important. As you all know, life doesn't stop just because you change jobs, and so we feel like this will help. They will still accrue the same amount of vacation in a year that they would otherwise, but we'll just start them with forty hours on the books, if you all agree. Um, again, we'd like to increase our lateral entry program from seven years to ten. And then the other last item that we're asking for is allowing employees to accrue vacation at a rate based on their years of government service. So right now, vacation is accrued based on your years of service with the City of White House. Um, however, as we have been recruiting tenured and experienced employees, that means that they're leaving a position where they were accruing probably four weeks of vacation a year to coming here, starting with zero and only accruing two weeks of vacation a year. So we feel like this is just one more thing that will move us to the top of the list in being an employer of choice and hopefully recruiting employees across all departments. Steph is happy to answer any questions.
Is that government service, is that limited to state and county parish? Or could it be military service as well?
So, um, as we've talked about that with our leadership team, so our retirement system, the Texas Municipal Retirement System, has provisions laid out for what prior service means for a player system, and we would adopt that, and that does include federal and military service.
Excellent. So on the seven to ten years lateral, how many officers are currently with White House that, would that also?
We would bump them up based on that scale as well.
And the seven to ten, what, what kind of difference is that?
Oh, I don't know.
It's roughly, uh, sixty-eight to seventy-five.
Okay. That's a good one.
So there are some financial implications with each of these, but there are also financial implications with us having open positions because we're filling them at an overtime rate or they're going unfilled. So, um, as a trade-off, there are, if we get fully staffed and we continue this for several years, which is what I hope we do, it will cost us a little bit more than what it's costing us now, but it, um, hopefully will provide greater officer safety, greater response, um, greater morale, all those things.
Well, not only that, but a ten-year officer, uh, these days is an experienced officer 'cause, uh, you find a lot of officers leaving after five or six years if this isn't, so you're gonna get a lot of good experience, which will also save the city money, uh, in the long run because they'll take hopefully better action, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with all this.
Especially like the vacation, that seems like it would be a big detriment to switching, even if the grass is greener over there. There's a big barbed wire fence.
And I think that that's like, across like all types of businesses these days are having to do that to be competitive. I mean,
Yeah, but Governor's slow on it. A few years ago, but we were, I mean, it took a while to realize that we should do that, 'cause nobody really cites that.
Yeah. It was just a thing for decades and, yeah, it's not.
Then as far as the sergeant goes, I think it's great. It'll provide a relief factor for the other sergeants and more supervision's never a bad thing, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with all of it.
Yeah.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to, um, add the additional recruiting strategies and to add the additional sergeant position in the police department.
Second. Alright, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. So we're down to item five, consider future agenda items. Should we go ahead and bounce back up to one? Let's go ahead and bounce back up to one. Um, we have somebody that signed up to speak on this section, so I'll ask, um, would you like to speak now or after the council has deliberated on this matter a little bit? You wanna speak now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright.
I'm so bouncy.
So Garrett Black has signed up to speak on, on the subject of this agenda item. She would name your, uh, yeah, she would provide your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Garrett Black and I live on seventeen five thirty-one, the count of twenty-one out of eleven.
Excellent. Take it away, Mr. Black.
Before I start my speech, I would ask City Secretary Hargis to pass around a photo of him. The City of White House should take inspiration from Boyd Park and Farmers Ranch, Texas. A park like this would have traction proven all over the county to look amped up.
Alright, anything else for us? Well, thank you.
How did you find this park?
Oh, my gosh. That's like human gerbils. That is, that is amazing.
Our spaceship.
Oh, I've seen that. Okay.
Jen, Yeah, that is cool. George is hard to impress, he's
Yeah, I've already seen this. This is old news.
That's 'cause, that's 'cause you can still play at parks like that, yeah.
So have you experienced this play area or is this something that you saw?
Issue something that I saw.
Looks pretty cool, right?
So are you saying you would hang out at the park a lot if it was like that?
Alright. Kind of input we need.
When you turn sixteen, will you get a job at the park to help clean it?
Sure.
Can adults, can adults use this, use it too? I mean,
Normal size of adults.
Haven't verified that yet.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Black. We'll take them into consideration.
He wrote it all on his own and put him up to it.
Alright, well, I'm sure your example has something to do with it.
Is she going to Dairy Queen after this?
Large dip tongue.
Yep.
That's right. With chocolate.
Actually, you know what? I'll take you. I'd like one too.
No, I think it's
I'd go too.
Let's just all go to Dairy Queen.
Let's just all go to Dairy Queen.
Yeah. Good job.
I, I actually have seen that. It was an ad targeted to me, which is shocking, 'cause I don't have kids that, I don't, I don't know, but it, it's like, it's a glow in the dark and all these really cool lights and so, um, like this time of year when it is super dark, but we have decent weather a lot of the times. They're still out playing. I, it's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Alright, Mrs. Black, we're ready for you to take this through, or take us through this. Do the best of your ability.
Mayor and council, as you all know, over the last several months, we have been working with half and associates to develop the city's first ever Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan. And the draft is before you tonight, just for your discussion, um, we will bring it back to you in February for consideration of a resolution formally adopting the plan. So tonight, we're just looking for your feedback, input, and thoughts on this. So I will run through it very briefly because it is a hundred and twenty-one pages. Um, as you all know, we started with, um, a stakeholder input, and so our stakeholder committee met a couple of times about this process, and we did a community-wide survey. There's a lot of information in this plan, a lot of maps in this plan, but what I really wanna talk to you about begins on page seventy-five. They did a great assessment of our current inventory, um, and again, got all that feedback and talked through all the different things with our community. I thought it was page seventy-five, it's not.
Oh, there you go.
So, we have identified eight goals related to our parks, and, and so I wanted to run through those quickly because I feel like they're really important in guiding the future of our park system. Um, parks are community focal points. They will be safe and comfortable for everyone. Um, the city will grow parks as the city grows. Trails will be for both recreation and active transportation. The city will increase awareness of recreational opportunities. Community experiences, recreation programs will fit the community needs. The city will have well-maintained parks, and the city will continue supporting improved administration of parks and recreation. So following each of those goals, half has laid out different objectives related to those goals that are included in this plan. And I won't go through all of them, that would, would be here all night. Um, but they've done a great job of identifying things, um, that our community has said that they want and, um, ways for us to move forward in that. So there is an implementation section in the back that we're really excited to start tackling and checking these things off of our list. Um, but they lay out some things that we should consider, um, particularly in this objective, doing some park design guidelines so that each park has specific things that identify it as a White House, a part of the White House park system. Um, I've seen that be really successful in some other cities, and it just gives a really unique feel to your park system while still maintaining continuity throughout the city. Um, so you can see here, they, this is just an example, they've laid out some things for Garden View Park. As you all know, Garden View Park has a really natural feel right now, and they've laid out some really neat ways to maintain that while also adding some play amenities for that park that may, that are not there currently. So this is an example of kind of some nature-themed ideas that would add some, like I said, some amenities to the park without taking away from the overall feel of the area. And so they've done that for each of the different parks. Um, as you can see here, they've kind of done a conceptual layout of, um, what should be in our current, uh, city park, and they've done that throughout this plan. Um, as you all know, but maybe the public may not know, we have recently purchased about thirty-five acres in the Shaahan Ranch development located just to the west of Brookshires. And so included in this plan is a conceptual layout of what that could look like as we develop that into, as a park in the future.
And you may think, wait, there's nothing to the west of Brookshires but woods.
That's right. And so that, like I said, they've done a conceptual layout. There, there are definitely some things on here that will change, and this is just very preliminary that we ran through with half, where they just kind of put on some things that we said we would like to see, but it will be changing slightly, um, for sure, so. Um, again, I'm not gonna run through all of these, but I, I think they've done a, a great job of taking in all of the Um, again, I'm not gonna run through all of these, but I, I, I think they've done a, a great job of taking in all of the various things. And they did lay out some areas for new park opportunities as we continue to grow. As you can see in this kinda southwest quadrant, there's a lot of opportunity for residential growth in the future. And so, just keeping that in mind as it develops, that we need some park area in that quadrant of the city that we don't currently have.
I think one over near Waterston is very important too, because that's a huge population center for us.
And with the new subdivisions that are going in just right before, I mean, yeah, that whole side of town is really.
Be great if it's walking distance.
Um, so this is a look at trail renovations. And right now, this is largely focused on sidewalk connectivity and the rail. As we all know, the rail, you know, potential for trail connectivity is sometime in the future with an unknown kind of date. We know that anything north of Hagan Road has a significantly longer date than south of Hagan Road, as it's not even on the radar yet. So, that's just something to keep in mind, that, um, we may want to further kinda define trail connectivity. Um, through our neighborhoods a little bit better, other than just on state highways and the rail line going forward. Those, I think, were the high points in this plan, but staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Like how in the survey addressed people what they really liked, and they ranked the parks that we currently have. Kinda let you know where people are leaning.
Yeah, and then, so in the back, they have this implementation plan that kinda lays out those goals and objectives. In a way that we can, um, easily make sure that we're moving forward on these items. So adoption of this plan, when you do adopt it, will, we will submit it to Texas Parks and Wildlife. And it will become a part of future grant applications. So, they say that you're not required to have a parks plan to apply for grant opportunities, but because of the point system. You almost never qualify without having a parks plan on file. So, a couple of things to think about for next steps. The next step would be to adopt, formally adopt this plan at your next council meeting, or the meeting after. Then we'll submit it to Texas Parks and Wildlife, and then staff would also recommend that, um, let me do some research on what our next steps are. With half to really develop a concept plan for Shaheen Ranch Park.
I spent a lot of time on that concept of what this space over here could look like. Very happy moment in my life. With all the rain going on, but, uh, I was impressed how much, um, utility they were able to visualize in that small amount of space. That small amount of space over there.
I almost did a double take, it's like, is this the same space we're looking at right now? That's a lot of stuff in a small space. Lot of bang for your buck.
And the connectivity across the railroad tracks, have they spoken to how that, is that a skybridge? What, what is that?
So that's assuming the rail line were to be abandoned at some point, so.
If you build it tall enough, certainly they won't care.
And, yeah, they were great to put this together for us. We have, um, just in the property that we own here on the, uh, east side of the rail line, is about ten acres. And it doesn't feel like it right now, because it's not well utilized. And so, um, one of the things we asked was if they kind of reimagine what that looks like. And so they were able to do that for us, um, and if you'll notice, it includes kind of the future city hall extension, what could be a new fire station. And some other things there, so they were great to put that together for us.
I think having a plan sets us up for partnership opportunities. I mean, you can see right up there towards the north, we're getting really close to Jasper. One of their, one of the things they were excited about coming to White House was the opportunity to kinda grow the outdoor spaces available. The amenities available to their, to their employees in that space. And the school district, or anybody else that were in line with the vision of what they want to experience in, in outdoor amenities. So I think it's a really good first step towards bringing all that stuff together.
You know, it's all one of Jasper's, uh, pain points, I think, of giving them access off of a major thoroughfare. As opposed to having to go through a neighborhood to access their facilities, so.
So in something like this, is it, are we able to add like vendors that will be here on the weekend to sell stuff? Like, is that, is that okay to do in the parks plan, or? Cause I can see like food trucks here on the weekends and.
Oh, down that new, down that new road, yeah. Close that street down and, and make it just kind of a, a day in the park type. I mean, a city street like that, that's not, that's not a tech dot road, which is what it feeds off of, gives us a lot of, a lot of control over. Kind of what we'd like to bring to the community.
Be nice.
Is that a roundabout in the middle?
It's traffic circle.
That's the new thing, roundabouts.
Don't you know about the roundabouts?
So Mayor and Council, um, if you'll just, as you have time, take a look at this, let me know if you have any feedback or changes, things that you felt weren't adequately addressed. I have a couple of things on my list already to send over to them, but, um, if you have anything else, just let me know. We'll get this back over to them and get a resolution drafted for one of your future meetings, so.
Alright, no action on this tonight, but any, any comments or questions from council at this time?
I think we're on the right track, I really do.
Yes, sir. Alright, that takes us back down to item five, consider future agenda items, and thank you staff for your work on that. I know a lot, I, I, every department represented in here went into, uh, questions, answers, surveys, locates. Like all the stuff that went into that, so thank you very much for helping them put that together. Uh, number five, consider future agenda items. Yeah, Mrs. Black, take it away, please.
Mayor and Council, at your next, I believe your next meeting, we will have an item for you to consider for the youth community council, spring fair. They've got a budget put together for their second annual spring fair, if they'd like to go on in April. And then, again, formal adoption of the parks and trails plan. That's what I had at the top of my, off the top of my head. For your next meeting. I'm sure other things will come up between now and then.
I can't think of anything either. Anything, council? Alright, let's look at some numbers, section I administrative reports, receive reports from staff.
I love our interactive charts.
Property tax revenue.
Yeah, we anticipate we'll have another thirty month in January.
Do people really pay their property taxes in December? Is that what that's showing?
Probably because most of it's F for escrow, you're more than just escrow.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. I keep mine on that fridge and wait, wait until just about time to.
Depends on how you pay it.
That's right, it's post, post-dated. Everything basically seems to be even or up a little bit, that's good.
Interest is still good?
We ought to be getting that franchise report pretty soon.
We keep checking back with them, they keep telling us they're working on.
Hang on, okay.
What was that, August or September, something like that, so, there's, there's gotta ways to go. No inspections in twenty twenty-four?
This is the December report, we haven't finished January yet, so.
Oh wow, we're fifty fifty on junk and debris and high weeds and grass.
Probably had two, two in December.
Well, it's, it's probably when they get rid of the high weeds and grass, they find the junk.
Same location. Christmas time thefts going. Probably, probably a lot of pork stealings, I imagine, chief? Or the three, but.
Cars get hit a lot.
Horse pirates.
Twenty-five open records request?
You always talk about the open records.
I just don't, I don't understand. Pretty normal.
Yeah. You don't know what they're requesting, they're pressing information on you.
This me?
So, that's just police department open records requests, that's not even counting what suits us in our track fund.
Really?
Most of them are probably asking for like traffic videos from side by side.
Library, the organization of the year being celebrated this week?
I haven't heard anything about trivia yet, so, still.
I feel like I peaked and, and probably should stay away. And, and I keep telling my husband, it was like the greatest night of my life ever, so I don't think he wants to go back with me, because.
They're all the categories you like.
We got a new librarian.
Alright, we have the, any questions on this part of it? Not well, I mean, the income statement was presented, any questions on the income statement? It's part of the packet, um, even those who play at home, this all, all this stuff is, are just links in the packet. Uh, we have our racial profiling report as well. You have any questions for, for chief or anybody on that? I think it breaks it down, it is really granular.
Everything's profiling up, I like the sales tax, very interesting, you know?
Alright, nothing from council on either of those? Um, that takes us down to executive session, we have something on executive sessions. So pursuant to chapter, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, city council reserves the right convening to executive session. From time to time deemed necessary during this meeting, the city council may convene to executive session to discuss any relevant polling topics. Depending on completed litigation, receive the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven one. Possible purchase, exchange, lease, value of real estate pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven two. Personnel matter pursuant to section five oh one dot zero seven four, economic development negotiations pursuant to section five five one dot zero eight seven. We're meeting on pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven two. The city council will convene to executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease of real property for municipal development purposes. The time is now six forty-one, and council will convene to executive session. We'll be rolling across the breezeway, feel free to hang out here, so this is.
Grab a beverage.
I'm gonna see him. Everybody's on your own. Yeah.
Yeah.